Alright, welcome back to the program hour number two, eight minutes after one o'clock. A beautiful, sunshiny Thursday afternoon. So happy to be with you today. That's little Michael Jackson, 1972. Jackson would have been, what about, he's the same age we are, so he would have been pretty young then.
59, 60.
Yeah, he was born, I think he was born in 58. I was born in 58, when you were born.
59, 58.
So you were the class of 77, right? I was the class of 76, New Bedford High, go Whalers, right?
Go Whalers.
Yeah, City Council Brian Gomes this year.
Tweedee, 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 Rockin' Robin.
We've known each other for all those years, too.
Yes, we have, sir.
And that goes way back.
Way back, and a pleasure. And it's often when I hear you speak of some of the old times that I can put myself right in place with that, you know, including where we were 40 years ago, with the blizzard of 78, something that we will never forget.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was a, that was a different day and age. I mean, we, you know what? If the blizzard of 78 were to hit today, I don't know, I think people would be jumping off roofs because you wouldn't have electricity for your gadgets and all those kind of things.
All those things that we didn't have. We had one another, that's what we had. We had neighborhoods, we had people.
People went outside to help each other.
That's right.
When the plow couldn't get down the street, people were out there shoveling the streets and working. Somebody go in the house and get some food and bring it out and, you know, that's the way it was back then.
And also opportunity for young guys like me and you to go throughout the neighborhood and shovel everybody out and make some money.
Oh my god, do kids do that these days? I don't know.
I don't know. I can remember us all sitting together on a porch, counting them dollar bills and splitting it evenly and whatever couldn't be split evenly, we'll go spend at the pharmacy.
You know, it's funny, I wrote a piece this week on Facebook about the, the school system back then, too, because we had had a snowstorm. I don't know if you remember this, or we had the forecast of a snowstorm the week before. And the schools canceled and it wound up being rain. And the parents were livid. Everybody was like, "Oh, we had to change our schedules and it rained, it didn't even snow." So the day of the blizzard, nobody canceled school. And kids stayed in and buses were, you know, buses were trapped.
Snow didn't come until about 11 o'clock that morning when the snow started to fall.
And everybody was in school.
That's right. Everybody was in work and then the snow fell quick and heavy and it was what it was. It was the storm.
And that's the storm that we measure all storms by ever since. City Council Brian Gomes is with me. He's the chairman once again of the Committee on Public Safety. I think, in my opinion, one of the most important committees of the city council. And you've held that position for a while with just a short respite for a couple of, for what, about a year. You were vice chairman, right? Now you're back as chairman again. Interesting, you know, when we think about the Public Safety Committee, we think obviously about crime and the issues of crime in the city. And this week we were notified, the city in New Bedford received a $330,654 Shannon Grant for fiscal year 18. That's less than last year. Last year was less than the year before and it's going down, it's going down, it's going down. So is that crime problem going away?
You chip away at the things that are so meaningful to communities such as ours and the crime violence and the gang violence. And you would hope that it's been proven that the money is spent well and to continue to bring that money until we either solve the problem or bring the numbers down.
So we get less and less money each year. Does that mean our problems getting smaller and smaller each year?
I don't think the problems are getting small. I think they're just cutting the money where they need to in order to, I guess, when they say rob Peter to pay Paul, that's what's going on.
Hmm. So what is the, what is the situation? What is the state of the state as it relates to public safety in the city of New Bedford right now?
The state, as far as public safety is, I want to first thank Lyndon Morad, President of the City Council, for the opportunity to return as public safety. I was public safety chairman 24 out of my 26 years and I take the job very seriously. I think you know that. Yeah, I'm a no-nonsense guy. I'm very supportive of our police department, the job that they do each and every day. I understand it very clearly. I watch it, I see it, I feel it, and I taste it. And the men and women of the New Bedford Police Department go through an eight-hour shift of ups and downs. And the crime in the city of New Bedford is one that is very troubling to the people of the city and one that I want to work with everyone. As you know, I called for a public safety summit last year because I wanted to bring all parties together. This wasn't a finger pointing. This was a matter, and I said it sitting here, to put a plan forth that we could fall back on. But I guess the plan was not to let me have that summit. And it's still on the agenda books right now. I'm going to give the opportunity to the chief and the great men and women that serve us on our department to go out there and do the job each and every day. But if something gets out of hand, we're going to step it up and we're going to talk about it and we're going to get the resources that we need. Again, I want our law enforcement working with every other law enforcement agency possible to rid our city of what we have running around our city. And we may not have had a shooting last night, but something happened last night that was uncommon for the common man. And that is a lasting effect. And we'll never get rid of crime altogether, but then we can fight it and we can make change. And we can make change in these neighborhoods that have not seen change in decades.
All last year, we heard about how the numbers, the crime numbers were down significantly in New Bedford. But we turned around, had eight homicides last year. It's February, we've already had one homicide this year, and that was in the first month, in January. What is going on? I mean, obviously, the numbers are compiled by the police department and sent off to the FBI. Is there some kind of a misrepresentation about what's really happening in the city of New Bedford?
I'm just not sure how all the numbers are put together, but I'm going to trust that the numbers are being put together correctly. We'll continue to watch that very closely and see where everything comes out. As I said, you're going to give the opportunity of everyone to work together. That's all I wanted to do. I want to work together. And I'm not going to sit idle when people are getting shot on our street, when people are getting robbed on our street, when stores are being robbed, when innocent people are being victims of crime. I'm not going to stand by and let it go. I'm not going to be silent. I'm going to be a voice for those people. I'm going to be a voice for the police department whenever they need to, and I've always been. That's my game and I'm going to stick to it. And we'll continue to support all the initiatives that are being put into place. Let's see what happens.
Well, perception is reality for a lot of people. If people feel unsafe and they feel as though crime is running rampant in the city, that to them is their reality, right? Particularly if you live in one of those neighborhoods where things are going bad. Now, the administration will say, "Well, we've got a few bad neighborhoods, but by and large, the city's a safe city." Now, you sat here last year and told me that's not true. You feel that's...
I don't feel that that's true. Listen, when the crimes numbers started to grow in these pockets of areas throughout the city, and this, we can go way back to the 90s when first started talking about Wall Square and all them places. And I'm not going to sit here and look for credit for anything, but I know I bring things to the attention of others and we get action. Action comes very quickly after. I told you, when I last sat here, or maybe a couple of times ago, when we were talking about what was going on last summer, I said that we had to get out into the neighborhood. You had to get out and walk the neighborhoods and talk to people. The mayor had to get out there and give the people some hope. What did he do? He went out there and he walked the neighborhoods. You call for something, action is taken. I'm just sorry that that action wasn't taken long before. And that sometime can be a cover for the moment. When you go back to the neighborhood, the criminal activity still continues. As I said, it's about time that we start telling some serious success stories of areas that are cleaned up, the trees are planted, the sidewalks are there, people are living and sitting on their porches, they're able, the elderly are able to walk to the bakery and go back and not be, have that sense that something may happen or have to be looking over my shoulder. Some may say, "This guy's very philosophical. He wants to want a perfect world." Don't want a perfect world, but I know what our city was and we had a city of a lot of respect. And I don't know any young people when we were young. We were talking about being young. They would even think of challenging an adult or an elderly person for robbery, anything of the sort. It just was, we have a different clientele out there. We have a sick city of people that are on drugs, that are walking around our city, talking to themselves, doing things. It's sometimes I look at it as, and I'm very, very saddened. I'm not going to sit here and BS the people. I'm not going to tell the people everything is perfect because it's not perfect. Because there are some mechanisms that need to be put in place. We'll take this opiate problem in the city of New Bedford. I've heard from so many times how clients get into programs, you go to step one, you go to step two, but when it comes to step three, there's nobody there. There's nobody there for step four. There's no complete program from start to finish. So when I walk out the door, I look back and say, "I'm never going back." And I've gotten a second chance. That person that has been, and many people have been a victim of this drug thing, not only by initiative to be hanging around with their friends and wanting to be part of it. It's come from the doctors that started writing out those prescriptions. And I said it a long time ago and nobody was listening. When the city council said it back a couple of years ago, nobody was listening. I remember being in debates and debating this issue.
Well, let me ask you before we get too far away from the point. City Fall River, as you probably have heard and maybe have read, has now filed lawsuit against some of these drug companies.
I would hope that the city of New Bedford would join them. And we should be joining them. The damage that has been done, it is phenomenal. And they have an obligation to give it back.
What about personal responsibility, though?
Personal responsibility is always there. But some people are weak, some things happen. And as I was getting into, you know, some of the victims of this drug epidemic has not been by, well, it's been by choice, but we helped it by writing those prescriptions. And then these pain centers that were put around the country where we put these dud doctors in there and they just kept writing prescriptions and writing prescriptions. And who was making all the money? The pharmaceutical companies. Billions and billions of dollars. It's not only in the United States, it's probably somewhere else in the world. But we know what we have to deal with. And you know, some may say that the President of the United States is being a little harsh on trying to stop the drugs and those that are bringing the drugs into these communities such as ours and across this country. The president's on the right track. You may not agree with everything that he does, but he's on the right track with that because it's killing our community. You see it. You, I know you, you observe. You're like me and many others out there. And as I said, it's a saddened thing to drive throughout the city. What you have to do is getting to the city is, you know, you can be a leader in city hall, but you got to get out into the neighborhoods. You got to know who you represent, where you represent, what the problems are, how these people are facing. We have, it just seems like one thing after another just keeps coming at the city.
What about injection, these injection centers that they're talking about, safe places where people can go? I know one's proposed for New Bedford.
I don't want no injection center in my city. That's only contributing to it. I want to get the people off the drugs. I want to clean them up and give them an opportunity at life. That's what I think we should be doing. I'm not going to give you anywhere where you're going to go inject drugs. I didn't support it. I don't and I won't.
Hmm. So here we are now. We're ready to implement the legalized marijuana. And I mean, look, we come from a day and age where, you know, marijuana became very popular with people that we knew and hung out with in our day and age. But the people have voted to legalize this in Massachusetts now. And New Bedford went along with it by a pretty good margin. So now we're faced with a situation of figuring out a way how to implement retail, implement, you know, I don't know, if the state goes along with it, whether there will be bars where people can go and smoke weed or whatever. The mayor has asked for a moratorium from you guys, and I guess you're going to take it up again next week, saying, "Look, we don't even know yet from the state what the rules are going to be." Would you support a moratorium until we at least know what the ground rules are before we start?
We can't do anything until the state steps up and tells us what the rules and regs are. So a moratorium would only hold back on taking that initiative action to get things in place, to make sure that the city of New Bedford is ready for what is coming and the revenues that we may be able to be generated to help our city in some way, somehow.
Isn't there kind of a contradiction here, though? I mean, on one hand, we're talking about opioids and a drug that's impacting our society. Now, we're talking, defending, I guess, the legalization of marijuana and having, garnering revenue from it that we can, you know, maybe pay for schools or whatever with, by the sale and the use of marijuana in the city.
When I first got a picture of the marijuana situation was when Colorado went into law. And there was a special on, I'm not sure what channel it was, but we kind of followed it just to see how it was. And it was from start to finish, from the mayor being out there in a historical area that looked like ours with this little shop that was very well put together. People were standing in line waiting for midnight to come to go. And 24 hours later, the mayor was so impressed in how the operation worked. But what he, I remember him saying was he was amazed at looking at the people that were standing in the line, that were from young to old. Marijuana's been around for a long time. People have been smoking marijuana for a long time. It is now legalized by the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm going to talk about Massachusetts. New Bedford has said to do, "We just have to be ready and willing to put all the mechanisms in place that will keep it safe for all, just as alcohol, just as alcohol." I look at it as it's been being bootlegged for a long time. We're taking the crime out of it also. We're going to take that street dealer out of it. What the legislation has done is look at the money part of it, I feel. When, you know, when you go from 12% to 26, 28 taxes, you're trying to generate revenues. And I understand that we'll have to generate revenues in order to school everything, make sure everything's in place.
But isn't that keep people going to the black market, though? I mean, if the state's charging 28%?
That's right. That's exactly right. And it's going to, it'll continue to go to the black market. The person that won't be going to the black market will be the person that says, "Now I have an opportunity to do it legally and not have to worry about it."
What about the parents, though, that are listening right now that are saying, geez, you know, along with marijuana, we're talking about edibles, too, that are going to look like little, you know, gummy bears and things like that that the kids can get and sell in school, use in school, and that we're, you know, maybe going to be enticing younger and younger people into using drugs.
Again, you would hope that no adult would contribute, just like we looked at it when we were a kid, that no adult would contribute to the delinquents of a minor. Listen, I'm not going to sit here and be a straight hour. And you know it as well as I do. I sat outside of a package store and waited with my buddies for an adult to come when we were a year younger or two years younger and see if somebody would buy or wait for the older guy that we hang around with to buy at the liquor store. You have to do that by ID. My point I'm getting to is that we handle it just like the alcohol. You have to have an ID. This stuff should not be accessible on the counter where just a kid could grab it. That's why you look at the mechanisms of how this state is going to put this stuff in place. You know, who's going to sell it? Is it going to be the liquor store that sells it? Is it going to be just an operational retail or whatever? There's going to have to be some safety precautions put in there to make sure that the kids don't get a hold of it. And you also look to that commission also to implement rules and regulations for those that contribute to the minors.
To the minors, yeah.
You held accountable.
So the big difference, though, between booze and these edibles, it's a lot more difficult to, you know, smuggle a fifth of Jack Daniels into New Bedford High School than it is a box of gummy bears. So, I mean, nobody in the school is going to know that you've got gummy bears or whether they're edibles and all of that. So it's, you know, it's a lot more difficult to be slugging from a bottle than it is. So, I mean, these things can travel with kids into schools and, you know, really get in there. And there's really no way to detect it.
You would hope again, Barry, that it goes back to the home life, the foundation that you come from, what is right and what is wrong. We didn't take anything into school that we weren't supposed to. You know.
Well...
Now you're putting us online. The police are going to pull up or whatever. No, we did nothing wrong. What I'm seeing...
The audience knows better.
Yes. And it was just, it was different times and the respect. And it all starts at home. And you know, you keep your kid in line, you watch your kid and what's going on. That kid won't run into trouble. If you were a parent, like the parents that we were brought up with, that, you know, when they said something, you responded to it.
So the mayor's talking about zones for this type of activity, like a zone for retail. He's talking about Hathaway Road or maybe a zone where bars might be able to serve marijuana. You might be able, I mean, you can't even smoke a cigarette in a bar now. So I can't even imagine you'd be able to smoke marijuana. You'd have to go outside, I guess. Are you up for zoning this stuff so that it's not near schools or near churches?
Again, Barry, you know, it's hard to put a finger on exactly how this operation is going to run without the state stepping up and putting their rules and regulations forth.
Right. Alright, let me grab a call or two, then we'll take a break. 508-996-0500. We've got some other topics we want to talk about with Brian Gomes, but we want to give you a shot. So let's start. 508-996-0500. You're up first then, WBSM. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
You know, a joint is about the same size as a cigarette.
Yeah.
So are we going to ban cigarettes because the kids can sneak one into school? It's hotter than a pint of whiskey or something? Are we going to ban cigarettes?
Hmm, yeah.
No. You know, like Brian was saying, it's got to be monitored by the parents. It's got to be watched by the stores that are selling the product. You know, everybody's going to keep a keen eye on it. But gambling's legal. I'm totally against that. But it's legal. Now, pot's legal. So why can't we, you know, people just accept it instead of fighting it, you know?
Accept it, ma'am, and put the rules and regulations that we need. We're a smart enough country, we're smart enough people to know that we don't want our kids to get a hold of any of this stuff. So now that it's legal, let's be the best that we can be. That's how I've always looked at things. And when you put people, as myself and others in charge, we're supposed to bring the best that we can to a community. Under this new marijuana thing, that's what I'm looking to do, is to make sure that all the safety precautions are put in place and that we keep it as far away from our kids until they're old enough to make their own decisions. And just as we had to wait until we were 21 or 18 to drink booze.
And once we do, we have to, if whatever laws are in place regarding it, they have to enforce the laws. They have to go to court and the judges have to impose, you know, penalties and sentences instead of not. I mean, that's the problem. We have, we have laws in place for other things, but they don't enforce them.
That's right. And you take me back to the point of, you know, contributing to a minor. If you're caught contributing to a minor or it's found out that you contributed to that minor or whatever, I think you should be held accountable. So while that commission's putting all the rules and regs, make sure that they stick something in there that makes sure that we hold those accountable that want to contribute to a minor. If I give booze to a young person, I'm held accountable.
Alright, appreciate your call, my friend. I got to hold you right there. We're going to take the break. 508-996-0500. Stay with us. Give us a call. City Council Brian Gomes, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee is with us until the top of the hour. Any questions? Any comments? We'd love to hear from you next on WBSM.
Hughes. I got to put that last name in there now. Okay, she is married.
Great guest, great guest, wonderful, wonderful, very intelligent woman.
Great lady has done so much for the cultures of people in this city. Been a staunch person of taking care of people. Those that didn't know how to take care of themselves or become citizens or whatever the situation is, Elena has done a great job.
Absolutely.
I don't call her by her last name because I feel that I know her personally, that I can call her by her first name, has done a wonderful job.
And she's a great guest. But I wanted to ask you because she gave, she gave me some startling information last week when she was on the air. It appears as though, at least in her point of view, this whole thing with DACA and the Dreamers will not be resolved by the March 5th deadline when it expires. She thinks it's going to be a political football until after the 2018 midterms. So what she is fearing is that come March 6th, some 2,000 people in the New Bedford area are going to go underground. That were here currently allowed through the DACA program to be able to have a license to drive, be able to work. Those permits go away after March 5th if there's no agreement. So 2,000 people more will go underground. And we know that we've already got a huge underground population in this area now. So what happens to these people at that point? I mean, what's the city's response?
Barry, this whole situation with this DACA and immigrant situation is the fault of the big boys in Washington. This should have been taken care of a long time ago. We've just let this thing sit. And now it's gotten to the point where some people have gotten in here that don't belong here. I am adamant about MS-13 wanting them out of here. Remember, I'm the first counselor to tell you that you had gangs in this city. And I can remember the night who I was with, the police officers that I was with, when at first getting a look at gang members from MS-13. And others were saying, "There was no gangs. There was no gangs here. They're here." Those are the people that I would hope that we would concentrate on getting out of here. I don't want, you know, me and you come from an era, how many Cape Verdean Portuguese immigrants, Irish, whatever it may have been, when we were a kid that came here and you know the stories. You know the stories of how hard it was to come here, once they got here. That you think about leaving your wife and children back in the old country and you coming here alone, never been here before, got to sponsor me, a cousin or whatever. You want to find a job, you want to work as hard as you can because you're in the land of the free, the land of opportunity to bring your family here and you do all that. And then you have some people who have just gotten past the gate and came here and brought us nothing but problems and brought us trouble. I'm not going to stand and protect any of those people. I'm going to protect those that have come here, just as the people we were just speaking of, that we went to school with. I've heard the stories of the sadness of a mom being here working 40 hours or more in one of the sweatshops and then bring her family here, having no apartment or whatever, but working hard. That's what it's all about coming to America, is opportunity. And then people took advantage of it. Some people come to America and don't take advantage of the opportunity. They take advantage of the opportunity to be, what do I want to call opportunists? To do crime, do drugs, put hurt on our people. That can't be. We cannot sit and allow that to happen. I want to protect all the Dreamers that came here and took care of business and did all the right things. I know they should have an opportunity. And they shouldn't have to run underground. I've heard crazy stories from the Portuguese or whatever, the man that's 80 years old, that's been here 40 years and originally came here. They're all scared. That's not the people we want. They've contributed. They've been part of it. If anything, we should maybe making it possible for them either to legal, legally be here, but with citizenship, with some cash rolling in in some way. There's a lot of ways of doing this. But to go after them is the wrong thing.
So you remember well the Michael Bianco raid, obviously.
I was there.
Yeah, we all remember that very well. That was national news.
I stood with those Bianco people. I was the only city councilor and Tony Cabral that went down to Bianco and felt what I felt. I remember Senator Kennedy and Kerry being here at St. James Church in the basement, seeing those families. That's heart-wrenching. They're families just like us. But I also know that things have to be done right. And I don't want to scare the heck out of anybody that's came here with a dream of being in this country and having a free life of all that badness that they have left or whatever was happening where they come from. But it has to be done right.
You've got to do it right.
You have to do it right, just as me and you have seen it done many times with many people that we are still friends with.
Alright, so we know that there are a lot of folks in this community right now that are here illegally, right? I mean, folklore has... I mean, folklore has it that the fish houses are full of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that other, uh, companies in the area, whether it be landscaping companies or whatever, everybody knows these people here. Why is nothing being done about it?
You'll have to ask those that are in charge. The money dollar figure is bigger than anything. Okay? You'll have to ask them that. I have, um, uh, some, I've been watching this immigrant thing for a long time, you know? Um, even trying to protect them at times when they were being robbed, their, of their checks and stuff. We had meetings over at St. Anthony's with the Bullitt Street, uh, Association, Ken Resendis, um, called because a lot of them lived in that area. Um, you're in this city at that time, as I said, um, if you're here and you're just going about your business, we, we, we're going to protect everybody in this city because a victim of crime could be me or you. Doesn't necessarily just have to be an immigrant or whatever.
So you would not support under any circumstances a sanctuary city?
No, I would not. No, I'm not going to support a sanctuary city and I think the government can do better than that. As I said, get your numbers together. If you've been watching everything and you were doing everything that we were supposed to be doing, you would know who was here and who wasn't. And you don't know because they have snuck in and the bad boys that are here, them are the people that I want. Those are the first people that I want to drive out of this country. I want them gone. I want, are you contributing to some type of crime or, um, demise of the, the city, the Commonwealth, this country in some way, killing, driving drunk, whatever? You're not gonna get that opportunity. You should not even be here. And it's just that simple. The people who have come here the right way, those are the people that we take care of and we continue to take care of and, and put the mechanisms in place. This thing is a mess. It really is a mess. And you're, you're right. It won't be spoken to often. You won't hear about how many are underground. That's why when you look at a city in New Bedford and they tell you that there's about 96,000 people strong, 98,000, I remember when we were over 100,000, I'm sure you do. Let's take that number up maybe 15, 20,000. If not more.
You think there were that many?
If not more.
10 to 20,000?
If not more. If not more. Unaccountable. Unaccountable.
508-996-0500. You're on the air with City Council of Brian Gomes. Go ahead.
Hey, so as a, as a Democrat, um, I know you say the big boys in Washington, but I never hear the city council sending a message to Elizabeth Warren.
On? We've sent, I've sent messages, we've sent messages to Elizabeth Warren. We've sent communication to Elizabeth Warren on different issues. Last one was, uh, about the fishing industry.
On illegal immigration? I mean, all we get is static from, um, uh, from the Democrats on everything as far as immigration goes. There's a great immigration plan on the table right now by President Trump and there's nothing but static. If you're a, if you're a Democrat in a city and you're a city councilor, you're, you're just as much should be as vocal if you think that the Republicans are right and that'll send a message to, uh, to Boston, to the state office.
Well, let me just, hold on caller. Let me just ask the council to respond to this because he, he has just vocalized his, uh, position on this issue, but you just mentioned that the council has communicated, uh, communicated with, uh, the, the federal delegation, including Senator Warren. What has been the response?
Um, I was saying, I, I thought he was saying that we, as a Democrat, we don't communicate or whatever. I'm, I'm saying that communications have been sent to Elizabeth Warren.
Okay. On this issue though?
Not on this issue. On, on other issues that I can, there may have been something that has been sent, um, not by this counselor. I'm just speaking of the issue upfront here.
Okay.
Yeah, well, see, this is, this is the issue. If you don't come out and talk to your leaders, uh, Elizabeth Warren, Kennedy, so on and so forth, that, hey, we don't like what you're talking about on the national level, uh, they're not gonna get the message. They think everything's hunky dory. So I'm not blaming you, but it seems to me that that's part of the problem right there because illegal immigration is what the Democrats really want.
All right. Let me hold you right there because he's got a solid point and, and I know the mayor sits right over there Wednesdays and, and does the, uh, the program from noon until, uh, 1:00. And the mayor, just as recently as yesterday, told me that he's in Washington pretty much fighting, uh, like the Lone Ranger on this issue of, uh, the fishing industry, Carlos Raphael, those licenses, uh, Sector 9 and all of that. And the, and the federal delegation is nowhere to be seen on any of this stuff. Has the council had a, um, um, any kind of cooperative relationship with, with the senators that we have? I mean, back in the day.
The only, after the motion that I filed, um, a month ago or so, or before the, the beginning of the year, um, pertaining to this fishing, um, situation with the Carlos Raphael, uh, situation, the only person I heard back from was Congressman Keating. And that was, he wanted to know what was going on because I was vocal, I was vocal on the council. I said that we're not hearing from them. You know, I go back, I've been around for a little while, so I know how at least Washington worked with New Bedford before. And we've seen our congressional person here all the time.
Well, I was gonna say, as much as I disagreed with, with Ted Kennedy on every issue, Ted Kennedy was here when we needed him.
All the time.
And the same thing with Barney Frank.
Barney Frank, all the time. But they knew, they walked into this city knowing people by their first name. I was amazed after meeting Congressman Frank after I got elected to, just weeks later for, to hear him calling out my name or to be downtown and, or get a phone call from him and say, I want you in my office right away because we've obtained some money for something that you were looking at. This is the kind of leadership that I've talked about. This is the kind of leadership of working together. You should know, if I represent in Washington on, um, New Bedford, Massachusetts, I should know about what is happening in New Bedford, Massachusetts. And New Bedford, Massachusetts should not stand alone. That representation up there should be stepping up to the plate.
So we're not getting the representation that we used to get here?
I don't feel like that at times. I really don't. I, I feel that when the city cried for help, the help came or the resources came. Barney Frank showed up with the resources. And that's not to take anything away from Congressman Keating. And let me just say this, I was pretty impressed to get a phone call in my car on a Saturday afternoon. I picked up the phone and I had had, we had played phone tag a couple of times, but it was Saturday afternoon and I picked up the phone, did not recognize the number, decided to answer it and heard on the other side, Brian, this is Congressman Keating calling. And to spend 40 minutes, a congressman with me on the phone, I must've had touched the vessel somewhere or I got the attention. But more importantly, he was giving me as a representative the attention and, and we had a great, we had a great conversation. He, he spoke of what he has been doing and what we may not know that he's been doing and how they've been going about it and that they, there's some other mechanisms to this Carlos Raphael thing that some of us don't even know about and, and, and need to be tended to on, on that level or whatever. But put a firm word in that he was doing everything that he possibly could to make sure that the fishermen were okay.
You never heard from the other guy, sir?
Haven't, never heard from anyone.
Warren, Markey?
Never heard. Never heard from him. As I said, I'm gonna credit Congressman Keating. Um, and again, that was impressive to this council and I've been around a long time and I expect the same respect that I'll give Boston or Washington to get back as a leader here in this city. Congressman Keating gave me that respect.
You mentioned Kennedy and Kerry at the, uh, at St. James Church. I remember that, well, I was there on a Sunday morning when, when Ted Kennedy pulled up in his black, uh, SUV and John Kerry did the same, um, and Barney Frank was there. And these folks were seen here, um, on a regular basis.
So me and you were there to see what we've seen, whether, wherever we stood on the issue, you got to see it. And some of it was heart wrenching what we had to see because you start looking at human beings as a human being and you, 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 you see people being separated, you, you, you see kids without their mothers that, that have already been taken away during the, the raid and, and, and it was just something that...
Well, look, I don't think there's any one of us who could say that if they were in Guatemala with their kids sitting in mud puddles right now, that they wouldn't do everything they could to get them over here. So you can certainly identify with that. You can understand it and you can sympathize with it. But when you break a law to do it, I mean, we're a country of laws. We're a country of immigrants, but we're also a country of laws.
I'm glad you said that. Is the law, the law is the law. That, you know, it's like in this city, we've been a little lawless and let people get away with things. Uh, I feel now, as I said the other night, sitting at a, uh, public safety meeting up in the North End, is that, um, nobody gets away with anything. We've got to, we've got to put the handle on any type of criminal activity and it starts from when you're young, your parents are held responsible. And if they're not held responsible, you're gonna be held responsible for your actions. And nobody slips through the, the, um, glass or the screen because we need to get things in order. We just need to get things in order. They're out of order right now.
Let me take a break. We'll come back. 508-996-0500. Our remaining minutes with City Council of Brian Gomes, the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee at the New Bedford City Council. Join us. We'll be right back. And now a lot of other people are hurting. That's all we're asking Washington and those that are in that higher leadership is to help out. Put our people back to work. Keep our, uh, uh, fishing industry thriving as it always has. Um, the rules and regulations, some of them that have been put upon the fishing industry are very harsh, costly and everything, and they've still may, have managed to maintain. And more importantly, those licenses, try to keep them in the city. And I know the Canasta brothers have put something forward and I think it's something that we should look at. It's local. These guys are local. It works. Let's do it. So I hear we're gonna get a train.
True, true. I've been hearing you do that all day too.
Yeah. So 1991, when we first, uh, you know, got where there was gonna be...
They told me we were getting a train then. Yeah. We were getting the casino.
We were young then. I had all my hair back then, Brian.
I had a full head of hair. You wanna, you wanna see the pictures when I first got elected? I have a full head of hair. Mr. Marta showed me a picture and I said, oh my God, look at that. But hey, you know?
So we got a train that's apparently gonna go through Middleborough. And from what I understand, most people don't want the train to go through Middleborough. From what I understand, our legislative delegation doesn't want it, the mayor doesn't want it, uh, Taunton doesn't want it, Middleborough doesn't want it, Lakeville doesn't want it. Nobody seems to want this damn train to go through. So what the hell are we spending? $935 million to build a train is gonna take you an hour and a half to get to Boston and nobody seems to want. What sense does that make?
Why don't they want it? That would be the question. Why don't they want it? It's the cheapest way to get the train in here right now. Um, I, I understand from $3 billion to almost $1 billion, um, 900, whatever the figures that has been thrown out. But the people of this area deserve that train. The people of Far River and Taunton deserve the opportunity to have that kind of transportation. We've just played with everything so much that the, as I've been here, the cost has been driven. You know, I hear the mayor sitting here talking about, um, the Faven Bridge. I have paperwork that was given to me, I wanna say from a former counselor, a long time ago, Tom Kennedy?
Hmm.
If not another counselor, when the bridge to replace the bridge at the time would've cost us a couple of million dollars if we had acted. This city has a bad habit of when something needs to be done, the act is not put into place. We play with it, play with it. Years go by, years go by, people suffer, the community suffers and nothing gets done. And then you look at other communities and everything seems to move very quickly. Let's start working together. Let's get it done. Let's not give the people, when, you know, when I heard the governor say that about the, I, I shook my head. I went, whoa. Okay. And then I started to thinking, um, on the other side, isn't it an election year? And that's why we're gonna play with this, knowing that this is, um, not the savior of all, as it's been said, but a vital part of putting our city together and making us a, a, a metropolitan area that, um, comp, competition with other areas for whatever it may be, would just be a piece of bringing that Boston traffic and getting us into Boston.
But having referred since 1991, all of these years, right? I can't even count off the top of my head how many years it's been. It's been so many, but all of these years, we've been promised this thing. Everybody felt that we were entitled to it because Boston got the big dig, Boston gets everything and, and we never get anything down here. So it became almost like the, the cause celebre where everybody went out and fought for this damn thing. And now we're looking at a case where it's not gonna go Stoughton. I don't care what anybody tells me, so I'll bet my mortgage it'll never go through Stoughton. Um, so now we're gonna go up to Middleborough, hook a right and, uh, and then turn again and go straight up if it can get through there. And, and it's really, it, it just seems to me as though we're settling for something that is not really what we want. If we said no to this and say, you know what? The hell with the train. Give us the money, we'll do it. We'll do the harbor, we'll do the bridge. Wouldn't that make more sense for us? Just to say, well, we wanted, we got the train, even if it's not the train that we wanted.
The train has been promised for a long time. We should get the train. Let me tell you this.
Do you think it'll go through Stoughton? Ever?
I don't think so.
So Middleborough will be the best we get?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we...
Thank you for being honest because not a lot of politicians say that.
I try to be honest anytime I, uh, most of the time, um, um, I wasn't brought up to be dishonest. I was brought up to tell the truth. And sometimes telling the truth gets you into problems, you know what I mean? But I'm a big boy and I can handle that. What, what I'm seeing is that's the route that will be, uh, that is most vital for us right now to bring the train in. I don't think it's gonna go through Stone. I don't wanna see, you know, this is just one piece of bringing our city together to be a vital city, to be part of everything else that has... What, what I wanted to say to you is we don't get our share down here. Look at the construction and things that are going on in other places.
Do we fight for it?
I told, uh, State Representative Cazera the other night, who sat in a meeting with me discussing the exits off, um, the, the city, uh, 195. Exits that I've been fighting for, for the last three or four years from the repairs that I found, the place cracking and whatever, they've done some minor repairs, Sector 5 comes down every once in a while, tells us what they're doing. But go up to Far River and see all them exits going off, up, up there. Go down towards Weaham and all them exits down there. It was brought to your attention the other night that we have the worst looking exits when you, um, drive into our city. This is what I've been trying to say. You wanna clean that up. And I'm just personally...
Well, whose job is that?
That's the state to work with us.
But that's the delegation to go out and fight for this.
That's, that's right. And, um, I'm saying that I'm just sick and tired of things taking a long time. Lot of things takes so long that people die and they never get, never get the opportunity to see.
So Far River gets 79 and all these new exits and the Cape gets their thing and we're still sitting here with squattage? Does that mean that we don't have a strong enough delegation or they're just...
Right now, I, I...
Now I'm gonna make, be real honest. Get you in trouble.
It, it's not trouble. Um, you, you, sometime you just don't, I, I, I've said, working together will bring success. Let's all work together. Well, uh, recognize what we have to say. You know, it's like being a city councilor. Recognize, Mayor, what the city council has to say or something that may be troubling or wanting to be implemented. Don't just send it back to me unsigned. Ask me about it. Ask me why I want to do this or why the council is looking to do it. We don't have that and that's something that we, I've been saying forever. Work together. You don't have to like me. It's not about liking me. It's about the people. It's about our city. It's about making our city the best it can be. And I'm gonna tell you, sometimes you don't feel that working together, um, situation. You feel that, um, everybody's just out to save their own... And I'm going to tell you, sometimes you don't feel that working together situation, you feel that everybody's just out to save their own neck. And that's, it's not about your neck, it's about the necks of the people of this city that we represent in this area and what they should be getting and what this city should have gotten a long time ago. We shouldn't be in this situation, Barry, we shouldn't be in this situation. Many great ideas have come out of this city and nothing has been implemented.
Well, you remember going back, I mean, all the way to UMass when they were, SMU at the time, when they're talking about the Technology Center and we were saying, you know, George Karyotis, the Dukakis administration, you're at the end of the universe. And that's how we're perceived.
Well, we're not the end of the universe and that, you know, some may say, you know, Gomes, you're big mouth, you're grandstander or whatever. Who's going to grandstand if nobody's standing up? Who's going to stand up if no one's standing up and being heard? If someone, if you're going to just go to meetings and be in the pocket and come back with nothing? I've heard you question certain people on this radio station, asking them about certain issues and they waiver and they go around it. Talk to the people, tell the people the truth, tell the people exactly the truth, tell them what transpired. No, we'll walk around it, not telling the people everything, oh, we'll continue to work on it, it's in the best interest or whatever. That's not the question that was asked of you, that's not the question.
We're out of time, I can't believe an hour's gone by so quickly.
How come it goes by so quickly when me and you are together?
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
I look forward to it again.
All right, we'll see you soon. Now, City Councilor Brian Gomes, who of course is the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. We're going to pause for the news, we've got ABC News and we've got local news with Tim. And then of course, the ABC 6 Weather Center Forecast right after that. And we're back with one more hour to talk to you about some of what you've heard today. So stay with us, you're listening to 1420 WBSM, we'll be right back.